Mr. Rabel. Why is that? We gotta go retire some flowers. We gotta reel the schools in, that's what I read. Bottom line is, we gotta reel the schools in. Yeah, yeah. So you didn't read it, did you, Mr. Rabel? What's that? Uh, May twenty-seventh is my first one. Boy. Oh, old boy? Well, old boy is. Yep. All of it came. Yes. (laughing). Sunday. They always do it on the night. And so, uh, that's Monday, right? I may go. We can talk. You know, it's Sunday night. Sunday. Sunday. They always do it on the night. Every morning. All sorts of things. Yeah. I was. Hey. I have a partner. It kind of won't be there, but obviously. That's been shut down. It's. They, they, they don't have, they don't have. It's slower. Well, they're fine. That's, if they were late. (laughing). Hello. Hello, 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 hello. President. No. Are you doing? You have flowers to copy. Hello. Are you up? Okay, this is six thirty. I can close.
Okay. Good evening, calling to order the session of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Madam Clerk, please, please, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda for tonight, after reading the mail, we'll have me reading the mail with the meal. Joint meeting of the Finance Committee about the audit that was just completed. Mr. Hinkston will be here. Seven oh five, we'll have input and updates from both the public and the board. Item number four is town boards and departments. A, town board appointments. B, staffing vacancy review requests from the Park and Rec Commissioner for Director, the Highway Department for seasonal positions, and Cable TV for production supervisor. Part C, the Sustainability Committee has to do with solar installation in both the towns of Littleton and Barksboro. Around seven thirty, we'll have Sam Park in to talk about the point and talk about liquor licenses. Eight o'clock, part six is Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. A, workforce deployment policy. B, financial management policy amendments. C, rate increase for ALS. D, town meeting article recommendation, recommendations and assignments. Following that is other business minutes and executive session at the very end. Mail.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. First, we have a, an invitation from the Historical Commission inviting one of the selectmen to be the speaker at the annual Patriot's Day observance, which is always held on April nineteenth at seven PM. April nineteenth this year falls on a Sunday night. And so, John Ledger, Chair of the Historical Commission, is inviting one of you to be speaker. Next, we have, we got a press release on Friday indicating that Governor Baker had approved a two-hundred-million-dollar funding for Chapter Ninety road improvement funds. Today, we got the specifics for Littleton, which is three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars and change. That's, that's lower than last year. We got five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand last year, however, that was our share of a three-hundred-million bond. This year, it's only two-hundred. That, that's been approved by the legislature, but the proportion is, is the same. So we will plug in that figure to the annual town meeting article where we're appropriating Chapter Ninety funds. And then last is a, is an item that we got from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, reminding us or informing us perhaps that April fifteenth, which this year is Wednesday, is declared one Boston Day in Boston, and that the mayor of Boston is inviting other communities around the Commonwealth to observe as well. And that includes a moment of silence at two forty-nine PM on Wednesday, which would be the second anniversary of the Marathon Gormon.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Heading to next session, section, Financial Audit. Bonnie and, and Mr. Hinkston, if you'd like to.
Could I just move there? So I can.
You sure can.
Make it to spread out a little bit.
Believe you can give you a chair like you're on the witness stand.
Hi. Thank you for having me and letting me do the audit. I think last time I closed the show, so I appreciate getting up. I didn't get to get on early this year. So I'm just gonna jump into the management letter, if that's okay. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions that they want to stop? Okay. First, the town, the town operates as, is a triple-A community, and it, and it operates as one both operationally and fiscally. So the management letter, as you saw, is pretty tame. But that's because the majority of things are done well. We, we look at the records of major cycles for internal control, the expenditures, the payroll, the revenues and receipts, and we look at the reconciling procedures in place. So at the end of every month, cash is all reconciled, all the receivables are reconciled, and the debt activity is all reconciled. So we don't have a lot to write about, but we do want, we do think that we try to look and add value by looking at things that'll either informative, points of information for you, or just some things that we think can improve the system. So every time they fix something, we will find something else to write about, because that's what we do. So fiscally, you continue to fund your, go in accordance with your fund balance policies. You funded your OPEB again this year. So those are things that your bond rating agencies like. They like consistency. They like to see that you have a policy and that you abide by it in all times. You know, there's good, good economic times, tough economic times. If they can rely on you for consistency, they like that. And, and, and you'll reap the benefits of that, of triple-A rating, every time you go out to issue debt. So that's just a quick, my, my overview of what I see for the town, but I'm gonna just jump into this now. So the first comment has to do with the loans authorized and unissued. It, in the past, that was a pretty simple task. You auth, you'd authorize debt at town meeting and then issue it one or two, depending on the size of the authorization, and then rescind the balance. In the last couple of years, the state has, has started to allow you to use premiums in lieu of future, future borrowings. So for example, if you had a ten-million-dollar authorization and you issued six million dollars but then had a couple, two-hundred-thousand-dollar premium, then you could use that premium instead of, of in that portion of the debt. So you would issue an, issue three-point-eight million at the end. But at the same time, you'd have to rescind that two-hundred-thousand-dollar part of the loan authorization so that you wouldn't end up spending ten-point-two million dollars on a project. So it's just gotten a little more complicated, and so we're recommending that all the town accountants record this in their general ledger. They're the ones that have the most information about town meeting votes, and the treasurer always has that information. I mean, gets that information sometimes secondhand. So he, the treasurer currently had, does a statement of indebtedness for the Bureau of Accounts at the end of the year, and we suggest that the ledger and that statement of indebtedness be reconciled at the end of, at the end of the year.
And just in Littleton's case, that we are, we've had some major projects. I put it on, on the screen here. It's one of our town meeting votes, or town meeting articles in May, that we have had a substantial amount of debt, nine million dollars, which because, even though the projects ended quite a while ago, the Russell Street School in particular, it was several years ago, but because we, we paid it off in part by doing the, the, the premiums or.
We used, well, we used premiums when appropriate, but we paid some of this inside the levy limit instead of going out for an exclusion, so we used temporary borrowings.
What, what was happening in the past, when you got a premium before, and sometimes the premiums are substantial, you get a three-million-dollar premium, that's not when you Elijah borrowing. And what the state had you do before is because if it came from a debt exclusion issue, you had to reserve it and use it to reduce future debt exclusions, so that you weren't issuing it and getting a big premium and letting it fall into your free cash and using it that way. So they would make you reserve it, and, and it was kind of a little bit of a complicated formula. It's not just an easy, it's twenty years, we'll divide it by twenty and, and use it to reduce the debt exclusion from there. But, and, and so you had this money just lingering around in the reserve and using it one-twentieth of approximately that every year. So now they said, well, instead of doing that, let's do, do it this other way, but it just makes the loan authorization piece a little more prone to error. I, I had a, one of my communities recently, when I was looking at, they used a three-million-dollar premium, but they never, they, they had a, their bond rating agent, I mean, they had their financial advisor keeping track of this, and they didn't reduce their authorization by that. So there was a potential that they would, could overborrow by three million dollars. So, so it's just a safety net and a good checks and balance, but. The next comment, I wanted to write this comment as respectfully as possible because Becky did an excellent job in the, in the collector's office, and I didn't wanna think, say anything otherwise. However, she reported, a lot of her reporting was on spreadsheets and when she was reporting things to the town accountant or to, to the treasurer's office, reporting receipts. After she left, I sat down, sat down with Debbie, and we, we identified some system-generated reports that would eliminate the need of putting it into spreadsheet forms. So instead of printing out certain reports and then accumulating them on, on Excel spreadsheets, we just identified certain system-generated reports that we can just use to, to send right over. So, I mean, it was right before, I think it just might be right a little quicker now, so.
Are you using those?
Yeah. They're working really well.
Okay.
The next comment has to do, it was in last year's management letter also, as a point of information. It's called Gatsby sixty-eight. And, and what that is, is it's, we, in the, starting in fiscal year fifteen, we will be reporting, required to report the Middlesex County unfunded pension liability in your financial statements as a liability. In the past, it's just been disclosed in the notes to the financial statement, and really, it's only been disclosed in its, as a, as the Middlesex retirement system as a whole. It was, wasn't, I didn't specifically identify your share of it. But now that the Middlesex is getting, inside their big valuation, they're getting many valuations of each component unit, so that your share of their unfunded liability is twenty million, twenty million two oh four. So that's going to be dropped into your financial statements. I don't think it'll have any impact on bond ratings, because spond rating agencies knew, knew it existed anyway, and, and if there's a couple of places, they could look in here and do some math and figure out your share of, of, of the liability. So it's not a surprise to anybody, and, and it's on a funding plan. Middlesex has a funding plan whereby supposedly by the year two thousand and thirty-four, I think it is, that the unfunded liability will be gone. Sometimes they extend those years if, if there's a real downturn in the, the market, and it would make your retirement assessment go up significantly. Sometimes they'll push it out a couple more years. And I think when it first started, it was two thousand and twenty-eight, or that, that it was supposed to be fully funded by, but a couple of downturns in the market.
Can I ask you a question? So was this a requirement of Middlesex Retirement, or?
No. It's the governmental accounting standards, boy.
Okay, so the, so there was an actual standard change.
Yeah. There was a standard change, and it's been kind of winding its way through, and, and fiscal year fifteen is when it's, when the report's gonna happen. It's kind, it's, 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 the other post-employment liability has been reported on a phase-in basis over the last, you know, five or six years we've been phasing in, reporting the liability. And so that's, that's started them back on the unfunded liability for the pension. So they went through a lot to get the first standard passed, and, and then they, so they decided they weren't gonna phase in the pension, they were just gonna drop it in, because it's the, the OPEB is being over thirty years. But as soon as they passed that, they put out another standard that's making the rounds, and I believe it'll be passed in the next year or two. That's gonna say enough of the phase-in of the OPEB, because right now, you have a thirty-six-million-dollar OPEB liability, and we were only required to put in the financial statements thirteen of it, and it keeps, it was gonna keep phasing in. But they said since, since the pension one is gonna be just dropped in, now they're just gonna say, okay, the rest of that, twenty-three. So you're gonna have another forty-three, within a couple of years, you'll have forty-three million dollars more of liabilities hitting your balance sheet. So it's a big number, but again, you got your bond rating with everybody knowing what, what those numbers were, because they are disclosed in here, they just weren't reported in the balance sheet.
We have a question from Betsy from the Finance.
For the, for the Middlesex one, that's nothing that we have control over, right? Paying that back, it's done elsewhere? We just have a percent of it, right?
Yeah, they, they have a fun, yeah, they have an actuary come in and they do a, a funding schedule, and they give you an assessment. So in their assessment, you're paying like four parts. You're paying for the actual cash outlet for retirees, and then for the, they have a funding plan for the, for the, the unfunded portion of retirees, and then you're paying in also for current people, so that they would be fully funded when they retire, and you're paying in for a percentage of their unfunded liability. So it used to be you paid one part. You just paid the, the Middlesex or whatever the, your retirees were gonna get that year. And that's why you had an unfunded liability. So now it's, it's being, being, and so they have a, it's, even if your employees went down, it's being incrementally built up so that you'll be paying more and more, but not a big amount more and more.
But we're the same as every other town.
You're the same as every other town, yeah.
Right, thank you.
The last comment in the management letter is, is a, just to bring up like one from last year that hadn't been remedied yet, or at least I think Bonnie has, has the answer to this, that there was a deficit in your police detail last year, and there was still a deficit this year.
You, you have?
Yeah, the police detail account typically runs in deficit, because the way that it works is the payroll is paid out to the officers, and then the companies like the National Grid, for, for example, is billed. Then they reimburse the account. So typically, you're running about a month of police detail billings behind before you get reimbursement. Over the last two years, there was a problem with billing and reimbursement, and that the deficit built up from a normal fifty-thousand-dollar, say, deficit amount, which was all, you know, billed out in receivables, to about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. A lot of it had to do with, there were larger projects going on. There's the bridge work repair that's currently underway, so there are more police detail activity going on. However, there was a problem with, with the billing and receivables. So we have corrected that. We are utilizing a segment in our financial software. We've activated it down at the police department so that they can use it, we can track it, we can see what's outstanding by what company, by what date, by what officer. The deficit has come down from that two-hundred-thousand-dollar level to seventy-five thousand as of today. So I think we're well in our way of, of having it back to the normal level that we would see, which is about a month, a month's worth of receivables. We have identified about a thousand dollars, say, in police details that probably will not be able to be collected for one reason or another. The people that engaged them might have moved and not left forward addresses, but we're working through that process now.
That's, that's a common theme with the police detail account, that there's, there's write-downs, because it, unless you are vigilant in your, in collections, then somebody goes out of business and you, and, and there's, there's really no leaning process that you can have for that type of a billing. So eventually, every place has some write-downs, like for, for the receivables, as a, as a, as many, any business would have. So if you only have a thousand dollars, that's, that's really not, not bad, I don't, I don't think, so. That's it on the management letter, but there's one, one.
Only question from the Finance Committee again.
Excuse me, but just a, a point of interest. Are to any communities force a prepay? If you don't pay, you don't, if you don't pay upfront, you don't start your project. You don't dig in the road, you don't do whatever that requires a police detail. I mean, to me, that would just solve the issue.
Well, it's such a, it's, I, I don't know of anybody that does that, because they're not, they're not sure how many hours they're gonna work, first of all. And, and so, I mean, a lot of it's with Boston Gas or some of the major companies, and so I, I don't think they're big on upfront, upfront. My answer, I guess my short answer is, I don't know of anybody that does.
Chief.
Most of the deficit right now is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be quite honest with you. They're about eight months behind on paying typically, and that's our major, our major road jobs which are going on, which we have to give protection to them. However, you know, they're slow. Doing a teller, doing a telephone, I'm dating myself now. The telephone company moved three times and finally, last week, issued a check for their whole fifty-thousand dollars that we've been chasing for the last six months. Some of the steps we have taken also, though, are for these small details, the, you know, like there's been some situations where, there's been some divorce situations where they need a detail because of the, the situation that's going on. We're making people now pay the, we're making, we're going to institute that they have to pay upfront, because that's where these smaller non-payments are really occurring. It's a person does one detail, and then they're gone from town, and it's like, okay, now how do you find them? So we're making those people prepay. Unfortunately, Bonnie says, you know, a month is, is, we're lucky with all the major companies. Typically, it's ninety days for turnaround to get paid, and for the state, it's, again, it's six to eight months. SPS, who's doing the major detail now, has stepped up and is doing much better. That's one reason the, the deficit has dropped so much in the last six months, literally. You know, she's making calls every single day to these companies, and I did bring up to Mr. Bergman in our last meeting that at some point, I may be asking the board for authorization to take some groups to Small Plains Court to, to go after, because I've got some that are, that are a year out that just aren't responding. But with the new software, you're actually right, part of the thing that comes in now is, like right now, NewCo owes us a fair chunk of money, which everyone doesn't know they're the ones who do all the gas company work. Well, if they come in for a permit to open up a road, the board certainly, we certainly will let the board know, hey, there's a thirty-thousand-dollar balance with them that's overdue, you don't have to give them the permit. Same with Verizon, same with all that, and that's one reason this new software, let's Bonnie track that also in the permitting software section of things.
And the irony is that we're usually waiting months to have these utilities show up in the first place to do, to do the work, you know, whether it's a poll relocation or it's holding up a major construction project, so.
Putting it on the, the new billing software is, is a game changer, because in the past, there, there, I think it was more spreadsheet-driven, somebody would have somewhere on a spreadsheet that who owed you money, and it wasn't easily accessible. Now, now Bonnie can access it up here, what the receiver is, who owes it the money, instead of having it down, down at the police station with the, is that what it was on before spreadsheet? Yeah. So, and, and it was, it's not, and it's, there's enough activity, so it's a cumbersome process that doesn't lend itself to reporting well. I mean, the, the police detail, so on a spreadsheet, but I, I, I've seen the different billing softwares for, and, and every place I've gone that has implemented a billing, they call it a miscellaneous billing package, it, it just is a game changer for them, because they, they, they rebuild more quickly, they, they look at it, and they're more accessed, more able to say, hey, we're not going to this place again until we get paid, so whatever you're doing, you can't do until, until we get paid, so. One thing I just wanted to bring up that, that's not in the management letter, but I think it's really important in recent, due to recent developments, is, is cybersecurity. Recently, several municipalities in Massachusetts have had some, some cyber attacks, and, and they've been from nuisance attacks where they had to restore some backups from a couple weeks back, to one, one community, a couple, I don't know, three weeks ago or so, had, had an attempt to transfer four, four million dollars out of their bank account, and it was stopped by the, by, by the bank when they called and said, did you authorize this? They saw it was going overseas, and they, so they stopped the transfer and called and asked if they had authorized the transfer, which they had not. So. So, I just think that it's important that it become a topic of conversation, and an ongoing topic of conversation for the town, for every town. Because there's a lot of smart people out there that are trying to crack into your systems, and I've had some IT people tell me that there's, every day, they're having hits into their networks. And it's not, and it's not just your finance people, because recently, the Mass DOI, they have their annual Town Accountants Association meeting, and usually the hot button item, they'll have a seminar on. Well, cybersecurity was, they had two seminars on it during their, during their seminar, main seminar. One was a Secret Service agent, and they had a consultant. And, I mean, it doesn't have to be your financial officers that are the ones that get under cyber attack. If they get in anywhere in the network, there's malicious softwares can wind their way to the financial data now. And so, I mean, maybe the people that are in your finance office know enough not to click on certain things, or not to download certain things. But it could be somebody who comes in and works five hours a week for you, and just opens up the network and downloads a file. So, I think it's something that should be a topic of conversation and ongoing, and it's just, I wish I could say, here's what you got to do, and you'll be protected. But I think that, you know, like, major corporations have their IT departments doing the best they can to not get under cyber attacks, or not be victims of them, and you can see that that happens all the time, that, you know, that major corporations with their best and brightest are having problems. And so, I think that, right recently, I was looking, I was reading about a seminar, the backup of a seminar, and they were saying that municipalities are under attack now, because a lot of them don't have highly sophisticated IT departments, and it makes them prone to it. So, I know you have an IT person, you know, a lot of them don't. But anyhow, I just think it's something that should be a topic of conversation for all your employees, and be vigilant, and talk to them often. So, I don't think it's, okay, we did that, now we're covered. I think it's.
It was on 60 Minutes last night, too.
Was it?
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah.
They're just attacking everybody. I mean, Tewksbury PD got, you know.
Yeah.
$400 ransom.
Yeah.
So, you're right.
But that's a small one, you know, that's a.
The 7th Police Department, that's happened with the state.
So, I mean, it's, they said it's going to get more frequent.
Yeah.
It's going to get tougher to detect, and the, you know, they're out there.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's what they do, you know, they just keep searching, they keep probing.
I think the conversation's twofold. Not only is it making sure there's awareness on behavioral, what you should do, but also our software, our technology needs to be constantly up to date. So I couldn't agree more, shocker, that this is something that's really important. So how do we make sure we, I don't know what we have now. Do we have training now for employees? Do we have, I have no idea. But I agree, let's put that somewhere in our minds.
Sounds like a goal for next year.
Yep.
I mean, I think it should, I mean, I'd say it shouldn't be something that's just a one-time thing, but I do think it should be something that goes into each new employee's hand, of here's our policy, here's what we, you know, something that, that's a starting point, you know, so. That's all I really had for the management. If anybody has any questions on the financial, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions?
I think you answered mine. My one's going to be on the detail piece, and hearing the discussion, I'm satisfied.
Maybe just to hear from Barney, that the proposed motion is to accept the report and Barney's recommendations, proposed actions, so just, we haven't mentioned them all.
Sure, I'll just go through my response. The first item for the loans offer, I've been unissued. Stephen, the treasurer and I reconcile the statement of indebtedness annually. I will incorporate that process into my general ledger so that we can track those offers and unissued debt service items. We haven't had any issues in the past, but it's a good practice, as he said. And I did sit down with Debbie, our new tax collector. Quite frankly, I was using the system reports previous to Debbie's arrival, because that was really what was happening. I was checking them against Becky's spreadsheets that she gave me, but I've always been using the system reports. This just makes it much easier for Debbie's process every month. She doesn't have to create this report that is really not useful. So that's a good thing. The Gatsby, you know, 68th, the requirements, we will, of course, comply with, you know, any new mandate that comes out with code recording financials. We will incorporate that into the next audit. And the police details, as I detailed, I think we're in good shape for that now. We'll just keep monitoring that, and the chief's been really helpful in making sure that we're speaking up.
What was that one finding with the reporting of time and time cards?
Oh, yeah, that had to do with the, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. We tested part of a test, and we tested federal grants, and there was one finding related to time and effort. When somebody works on a federal grant, there's certain, they either have to prepare a time card, or either, if they're 100% charged to that particular function, they have to do a semi-annual certification saying that they worked on a special education function, or whatever function they're being charged to. Or if they work on multiple grants, if they're working on a regular education and a special education, then they have to do a certification monthly. And there was, the vast majority were done, it's, what happened is, at the end of the year, they transferred some expenditures over that had been previously charged to the town's general fund, and because they realized that there were still funds available in the grants, and that there was a time period where they have to be used, so they made a journal entry to correct it. Well, so they, because they weren't charged to the grant originally, they didn't do the time and effort certifications that they would have, that everyone that was charged to the grant originally did. So, I talked to Steve Mock about it, and he's.
Good to go.
Yep.
And that shouldn't be in the, in our letter?
It's not required to be, no, it's, no, it's just a finding in that.
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Move that the board select and vote to receive the fiscal year 2014 audit financial statements and management letter dated March 27, 2015, prepared by Gusti, Inkston, and Company. And further, to accept the response prepared by Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget dated March 27, 2015.
Second? Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Good job, Barney.
Yeah, great job.
Moving on, public input. Any public input for tonight? Seeing none, I'll go to the board, most of anything.
I've been waiting for that all year. You never looked this side, Mr. Chair. That's awesome. I just want to recognize that.
I feel like an equal member of this board, I'd like to just mention that. And just something very quick for me, this, I think last week, there was an informational session, Keith mentioned it, on the stretch energy code, which is a part of the town meeting articles that are coming up. So it's been posted on LCTV on demand, so if you weren't able to attend that informational session, please go watch it before town meeting, before you arrive at town meeting, to then go vote on the article. And that's it.
Mr. Caddell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the 15th Annual Tiger Tournament is Friday, May 1, 2015, at the Townsend Ridge Country Club. It's always a blast. We have a great time. This is our 15th year doing it. You can contact Mike Lynn at 978-952-2749, or get to the LABA website, and all the information's there, too. Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
I have nothing.
Scott Sabella? Moving on, 4A, Keith, placeholder case.
Yeah, there's nothing to vote on tonight. You were able to make all your appointments to the master plan updates hearing committee on Thursday night, so we're, no action tonight.
Okay. And as far as the master plan, we still have one vacancy that's.
We still have one vacancy for a citizen-at-large member, and we're reposting that vacancy. So, hopefully getting a meeting of the committee before too long.
Thank you. Now, Park and Rec.
Fred indicated he was going to be late, so maybe.
Put that off?
Yeah, until he gets here. But we do have Highway.
And you're looking for seasonal work, is it, this is something that is done every year, isn't it?
We just started again, this is the third year that we've had it. We had it previous, and then it got eliminated, and we brought it back, and it's helped us out quite a bit.
And what months does this happen in?
Basically, we've been using college kids, so they come middle to end of May, and they usually leave about middle, possibly the end of August.
Any questions for us?
All funded, no problems, you're all balanced? I'm good. Ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move that the board select and vote to grant the Highway Operations Manager request under the staffing vacant review policy to fill two seasonal summer highway labor positions.
Second?
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Here, Carrie is. Cable TV production supervisor. Are you?
Present, okay.
Yeah, we, the LCTV board have been looking at the increase in workload we've been handling in the studio for now, for the last six months or so, and decided that we would like to upgrade or add additional hours. And we've decided to put in a brand-new position of production supervisor, looking to hire inside, to take the current employee we have working part-time now, and make it a full-time position. We've been doing an extra lot of work. We're doing more and more boards now, constantly. We're trying to get in with the, to do more work for the schools. So there is need for an additional 20 hours, especially because one of the things we're also looking at is an inter-agency agreement with the town of Boxborough to provide TV, cable TV services for them. Their selectmen's meetings and their town meeting, which we've done some free grabs for them last year, we did their town meeting for them. And so they're looking to get us to provide that. And we figure that's going to take about 10 hours a week to provide that for them. The money coming back from them will help make this position to include fringe benefits and retirement. So, we would like very much to do that. It's been through, the job description's been reviewed and graded by the Personnel Department, and it's come out as a grade nine. The, no funding from the town, everything is covered by the cable account, which is funded through PEG funds from the cable companies. So it doesn't touch our town budget. And we, I said before, but I want to reiterate, we want to make this an in-house hire.
Question I have, you agree with me, we have a Boxborough, will you be taking a little of their TV? Do they have cable TV right now?
Yes, but they do not have anybody running, they're not providing services for themselves as far as cable TV for their selectmen's meetings, or for their town meeting. We have a good studio, we've got all the expertise. They inquire as to whether we would be interested in providing that service to them. That is something that Keith and the town manager, town administrator in Boxborough are working out along with Mark, our executive director.
And we've crunched a number of about, we, over here, on our side, crunched a number of about $55,000 that it would cost to provide the basic service level that Alan described, and we've shared that number with my counterpart in Boxborough.
Have you ever, you have a qualified contract yet, or?
We have, we have the draft contract that's in the packet here, we're not planning to bring it forward. Their board is going to vote on it on the 27th of April, and so we could bring it back for execution after that. But it's, you know, there are a number of initiatives, as we'll hear tonight, there's a number of initiatives going on between our two towns, and they're quite satisfied with the idea, enthusiastic about the idea of having our, procuring their services from Littleton staff. They would use their PEG funds to pay for the service.
Question?
So, if, for some reason, the deal with Boxborough does not go through, you still need this position?
I still need the position, yes. And we have the funding for it. This Boxborough thing just makes it a lot easier for us.
Yeah, and kind of piggyback on that, because the memo we got here from Barney says that, you know, it's going to cost, your revenue is, including Boxborough, is $187, and your expenses with this new position is $187. So, how are you going to make up that, if it's, you're spending $187 depending on the $155?
My revenue stream, my expected revenue stream is around $210,000.
Right, and what comes in through the PEG funds, it far exceeds what they actually spend down.
It's on here, that's.
Well, no, that's just showing you what the budget will look, what the budget possible will be.
Right, there's a balance. In fact, one of the things we're exploring right now, there was a recent change in the law that allows cable operations to become enterprise funds, so we're looking at, it's a brand-new law, we're looking at that. And that may be a way that we could have, we could show the balance of, you know, what's the, because right now, the PEG funds that just sit in an account, that's where we go if we need capital expenses. But we don't appropriate them until we need them. And so in the operating budget, we're, right now, we're not committing fully in our operating budget what we take in each year in PEG funds.
So to answer Alex's question, it would be, we'd have to take a look at that fund and do the transfers Keith just explained.
I'm sorry.
If the Boxborough deal falls through, we'll have to make an adjustment to your fiscal year budget to incorporate the money that's necessary to do this hire.
Yeah, okay. And the funds are available to do that.
Didn't see it on the issue. I'm good.
Me, too. Anything else?
Move that the board select and vote to grant the Littleton Community Television request under staffing vacant review policy to fill one internal promotion, a new full-time 40-hour per week benefit eligible grade nine position to LCTV production supervisor, to be paid from PEG Public Employment, Public Education Government Cable Access Funds.
Second? Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. 4C?
No Fred yet.
Okay, move on then, Ray.
Yep, we'll, if Park and Rec shows up, we'll take it out of order. Or when Park and Rec shows up.
Sustainability Committee, this has to do with solar energy, both Boxer and Littleton, would you like to speak on it?
Yes.
Just a little slideshow.
Great. Thank you. So, you may be.
This is Sarah.
Sarah Randbacher, Sustainability Committee.
And that's Erin, and that's Jen, so.
So you may or may not be familiar with the Solarized Mass Program, which is a program from the Mass Clean Energy Center, which is, its aim is to increase adoption of small scale electricity. And it's a tiered program for purchased five residents of systems. Over, somewhere around 45 cities and towns have already taken advantage of it, and five more are doing it in 2015. The catch is, it's only available to residents of towns served by investor-owned electricity companies, and since we're lucky enough to have a municipal electric company, we actually don't get to take advantage of that. So we, as a committee, thought that that wasn't available to us. In addition, the LELD has a 1% allocation for net metered systems, so net metered, a net metered system is one that you're producing electricity, and any overage that you produce goes back into the system. The electric company buys it back, so it's a net price that you would pay, what you use minus what you produce. So that allocation was filled by 12 residential installations and three. So that allocation was, was filled by twelve residential installations and three commercial installations. However, our committee recently found out that Boxborough, who is also a Littleton Electric customer, was initiating a program on their own, and they had found out from LELD that they had plans to increase that cap, so that would open up the more capacity for net metering systems, and they were also, they're also planning to split the residential and the commercial caps. So their currently proposed plan will allow for systems up to five kilowatts to be net metered, has to do with how much electricity the panel will produce. And the other part that is, is not yet in place, but is that the homeowner could say no thank you to the net metering and possibly take part in a rebate program, so depending on the size of system that they install, they could get a rebate of up to a thousand dollars per kilowatt, up to five, a five-kilowatt system, so five thousand dollars. So with all that in place, suddenly it became feasible for us to, to implement a solar program, similar to the Solarized Mass programs. So we immediately began coordinating with the Boxborough Energy Committee, who has been working on this since about November, to, and we met with them to see if we could, if we should do a joint program. It was pretty quickly determined that it's advantageous to both towns. By joining together, it meant that we would have a bigger pool of residents buying systems, that places you in a higher tier, I think I mentioned it's a tiered program, so the more systems, the more kilowatts that you install, the installer will give you a better price, so the price for everyone goes down if more people are participating in the program. So there's, that was a big thing, and it would, it was very attractive to Boxborough, who is a smaller and literally a shady community, so they were thinking that.
The nicest word.
Not figuratively. But, but they, they were concerned that they might not be able to get to that highest tier where, where you get the best price, because they do have a lot of homes that may not be the best for solar, but adding the two towns together gives us both a much better opportunity for that. It also allows us to pool our resources on doing educational programs and publicity and so forth to, because this is really, the success of the programs seem to lie in getting, really getting the word out and getting some education in the community about what can be done. So, the current status is that the Littleton Sustainability Committee and the Boxborough Energy Committee have both voted to support a joint initiative. There is currently, the two towns are working on finalizing RFP that would, that is looking for bids from an installer to come in and do the program. You should note that the town does not contract with the installer, the residents contract with the installer, and there's no financial obligation for the town for this program. The RFP is going to, the, the exact date is unknown, but it's, should be in the next few days, should be this week, in all hopes. There's work on a draft memorandum of understanding that clarifies the town's participation, clarifies some legalities that Keith can probably speak to better than I can.
Right, and, and Tom has reviewed the documents, that Boxborough's going to be the lead dog in this, that frankly, they've done most of the work, they developed the RFP, they had their town council do the lion's share of the reviewing, ours has looked at it as well, but it will be a joint procurement insofar as it would be open to, to residents of both, both communities, the RFP will be issued in the name of both communities, but we did, and I want to thank the Littleton Sustainability Committee for just jumping right into this project, and that we, I've had a number of discussions with the Boxborough Town Administrator, we've met and talked with the Littleton Electric Light Department staff to just make sure that we understand what sort of procedures they're going through to them, and their rate structures, to adopt a, the rebate program and so forth, so there are a number of steps that, that the Electric Light Commissioners will be taking in the next couple of months to finalize some of the, some of the rate, rate side things, but they, they have, they're aware of what both of the towns are doing, they're, they're all, I think, all on the same page about how to, how to proceed, so what we're looking for tonight from the selectmen is, is a vote of support for the joint effort between the two communities.
So, so is the inspectional services, any Littleton Electric Light involved in your RFP preparation?
The, no.
They're not?
They're not, no. So inspectional services, I don't think we have brought them in.
Building and electrical inspectors, I think it'd be good beneficial for you guys.
Yeah, we can certainly have, you know, have them involved.
Yeah, so basically, our P J is, he's really just book purchasing, so he has a better deal. The memorandum of understanding really doesn't make the town do anything.
No, I understand it, but just to have some, you know, some of that, the note, or that in the note to be involved in your RFP process, I think it'll help you guys, and you'll get that better vendor for all the towns.
Yeah, that's a good idea, they could maybe even review the proposals when it comes up.
Absolutely, along with LELD, I think that might help you out too.
Yeah. Yeah, we can ask him.
Sure, I'm sure they'll help you out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, along, sort of along those lines is that, you know, a lot of these green initiatives that are green initiatives have some not-so-green plates that come with them, or at least in the process of it, so I want to address my question to, to the fire chief, is this, we know this presents an issue for firefighters. What kind of preparation, what has to happen to deal with the fact that these groups now have something that is very dangerous for firefighters on?
As far as the solar panels in general, you know, being on the commercial buildings, it's just one more thing that, you know, we have to take into consideration depending on what's been burning underneath, the fire protection, what they have for the fire protection, and, you know, it basically all boils down to that, the progress of the fire and the additional weight on the rooftops. It definitely eliminates the ability for us to move around and have, you know, our choices of ventilation on the rooftops with all these units, because they don't just attach and move around. It does, it does change our, our game plan.
How's those materials?
That as well, as far as what's burning up there, and not only that, but the electricity. You can kill the power, however, there's always a charge in those panels, so it's not something that we can just go ahead and cut through.
Another good guy they have.
Yeah, we'll make sure our inspectional departments, including fire, are involved in the RFP.
Say a hundred thousand dollars been proposed? What's the source of the hundred thousand dollars?
The Electric Department.
Okay, so the Electric Department through army meetings?
Rates.
So how will they source the hundred thousand dollars? Who will be paying the hundred thousand dollars? Is the guy gets the question?
It's coming from the electric company, I don't know how they're running the money through internally.
Wherever, wherever they get their source of all their funds.
Okay, they've specified who's they?
They, the Littleton Electric Light Department, Board of Electric Light Commissioners.
Have they proposed a grant system that they can secure funding that way?
I don't know.
Have they proposed, the staff, the staff is proposing, their current draft is to propose a rebate program of up to one hundred thousand dollars. What the source of that funding is, is somewhere in their budget, they haven't specified where within, you know, with all the, with all the funds that they get from various sources, which particular one with the hundred thousand dollars to be charged to what they haven't shared that information.
They, they do to, this might help you PJ, they, the, the light department, when we pay our bills, a percentage of that bill is for energy conservation, green initiatives, so it's built in our monthly electric bills. That's when you want to do an energy audit, and you call the Littleton Electric Light Department, they send somebody out and they do an energy audit of your house, that's how that's all paid. They want to do rebates on old refrigerators and things like that, that's the funding, I believe, where it's coming from.
It sounds like nobody knows in this room tonight where it's coming from. If someone knows, I'd be happy to hear it.
And they haven't finalized it yet either, so it's something that they're considering internally at LELD.
So to support a hundred thousand dollars without knowing the source of a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, but it's not-
And this has nothing to do with the efficacy of good green initiatives?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not even that, though, that, that, if, even if this RFP was never done, that the Littleton Electric Light Department is proposing a hundred thousand dollars that would be available to customers, to their customers for, for rebates, all that this initiative is doing to say, well, if they're going to do that, then can, can, is there something that we can do to help lower the installation costs for?
Appreciate that, Keith, we still don't know the source. Now, is it prorater between Boxborough and Littleton, the hundred thousand dollars? Or is it first come, first served?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been passed by LELD, and that hasn't been worked out.
I wonder if we're to support a plan, we know the plan is first. It's, these are good intentions.
Yeah, but they, but the Electric Light Department hasn't adopted their plan of what, how their rebate is going to work.
Okay, fair enough.
And, and the two are really independent, they, they join together to make two good things better, but the, the Solarized Initiative can certainly continue without that rebate program.
Okay.
Paul, but if, if, the Light Water Commissioners have, you know, thought about this and have worked with this committee and done all that, and then they've made a commitment by whatever means they're going to, I think that's all we've, you know, that should be fine with us. That's, that's their, that's their thing, they've made, you know, that's their authority, they've made their commitment, so what we should be measuring is, is commitment to make this project work. They'll work out the details of whatever it is, and I think what we're doing here is saying, are we on board with this effort?
Okay, I see in here that there will be a staff proposal meeting for net metering redesign on April twenty-second, so I take that to mean that the LELD has not yet decided how they're going to acquire the funds, and that we don't know how much of the funds will be spent in Littleton, how much of those funds will be spent in Boxborough. And since Boxborough has been the lead already, do we run the risk, and risk may not be the right word, is it a possibility that Boxborough was out of the gate so quickly they eat up the hundred thousand dollars before anybody in Littleton has an opportunity?
That's only possible, it's more likely if we don't participate in this joint effort, because Boxborough's doing it, whether Littleton does it or not, but they recognize that there are advantages to them to be able to attract a lower per-unit installation cost.
Enough of the tier, let alone the standard fees.
So, but this helps position by our jumping on, the, onboard, an initiative that was already moving forward, it allows Littleton to catch up with Boxborough.
I guess my next question then would be, the board of selectmen's permission is required for you to proceed this?
No.
Or is this just a feel-good, we support?
We're here, feel-good support.
Okay, we all feel good about it, no more questions.
I have one, one quick question, if, if an individual is interested in doing this, and the whole thing happens to you getting a certain rebate from the, from the Littleton Light Department, will the individual homeowner own the panels and all the equipment, or is it leased and?
The Light Department is currently specifying that the panels will be owned by the homeowner, they don't want any leased panels.
Although commercially, we have some leased, I think. I think the Millsix building, I think those are leased solar panels.
Yeah, I know very little about it, but I've been reading it here and there, and I didn't, didn't know that some, some companies should actually lease them, and you could, they pay you a certain amount of money to have it there, so I didn't know how it worked.
But I, I think that is the case of the Spitalfields Pond Road and Millsix Drive Building, the planning board looked at that, but that's just done both ways in communities, it works well both ways.
Okay.
Can I ask, as part of the motion, we request the Light Commissioners ask Scott to come and tell us what we feel good about?
That's a great idea. It's vital, me be happy to do that.
Thanks.
Do you want to put the motion?
Move that the board of selectmen vote to support Littleton Sustainability Committee's participation in a joint initiative with Boxborough's Energy Committee for a tiered discount solar installation program, and the Littleton Board of Selectmen request, the Littleton Light Commissioners, to request their general manager to speak to the board of selectmen after the planning details are taken care of, so that we're aware of the details.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work, all, thank you. Thank you. Now, going back to-
Fred's here.
Four B, one Park and Rec Commissioner, Staffing Vacancy Review Director of the Park and Rec, Mr. Chairman, would you like to take, to take the lead in this?
Sure, because I guess it's just me anyway, so. We're just here to, we, I'm just here to see if we can get approval to hire a director. We've redone the job description, the GALLA keep grading on top of this, so it's gone down from a grade twelve to a grade eleven, we've taken out driver's ed, we've made some other changes to the commission, takes a little more impact of law, decision-making and policymaking. I think that's it, I lost. We need somebody in there, Sharon doesn't know how to do it.
Sharon will be on pitch-hiking for me soon, we keep her in the director.
Who's, who's going to be in charge of the driver's ed?
We're, we're-
The whole program will lead on as of June thirtieth.
So the position was rated, had previously been rated a grade twelve, this revised job description comes in at grade eleven.
I recall your discussion about the driver's ed program, and part of that discussion was that you had a liability for some months after, so is June thirtieth the last possible student that will be finished, or you stopped taking new students at that point?
We've already stopped taking new students, and whatever they've completed through June thirtieth is what they'll complete with us. The state has generously offered to credit them the driving time that they've done, which they tend not to do, so we'll only be, have it to refund whatever number of hours they're short, as opposed to the entire package.
How's this doing for your budget now, I know there was issues?
It makes it easier to come in at a balanced level.
Well, so sixteen, I know there was, it was kind of still up in the air as far as your FY sixteen budget, have we codified that, and when can we report that out, I guess is what my question is.
This is bad one, is it?
The budget that's printed there supports the staffing level that I've described in the attached sheet, along with the, like, summer camp programs and swimming and everything. It also eliminates the driver's ed staffing, so you can see that the FTE equivalent went from like six to four-point-nine, it keeps the, the director's salary funded at forty hours a week, but at a lower level, so as appropriate, it is in balance. I am, Wade, Sharon's giving me some details on some subaccounts within the, for the expenses, not for the wages, so the wages is, is the butt of the mat, we're comfortable that it can be supported on the revenue. And they're conservative revenue estimates for their program.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to grant the Park and Rec Commission request for staffing vacancy review policy to fill one full-time benefit grade eleven position Director of Park and Recreation in Community Education. Moving second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Fred. It's a busy night, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Number five, Mr. Park, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I know you have requests, but at the same time, you can give us a little bit of an update of what's hap-
Yeah, that's what was going, I'm here really to give the update. I think Keith and the lawyers have worked out what they think is the, I can share with you a two-second overview of why we think it's important for what we are regarding the licensing, but I'm actually here to kind of, I get to do the, the man, like, picture presentation.
And you're very talented at it.
Thank you. Let me just grab those, but relative to the liquor licenses, um, as you know, we're, we're implementing a series of phases of construction at this point, all at differing degrees. Generally, we're relying on stores and sort of trying to create a mixed-use environment, so to do that now that we'll be building for the next two years to complete the project, having sort of a, we understand there's 10 liquor licenses available as opposed to going out and securing, we've had to build the restaurants out, you know, we basically transfer them to the tenant. And so for us to make that capital investment into the restaurants and build them, we need to know that we have enough licenses to sort of fulfill all the pressures that we're entering. We ourselves prefer not to actually be in the liquor business, but the, the idea is that, and we've done this in other places where, you know, in order to create sort of the pedestrian environment that we're looking to create, obviously, we don't want just one, you know, casual restaurant, we want a series of restaurants, and we think the minimum number that makes it work is six. And so in working through it, we could go out and actually secure six individual licenses. The problem with that is it doesn't give us perpetuity of, so at least the ability to make sure they stay at the point. Um, and so consequently, now those six that would be brought on board, you know, we'll go through the same process for each individual applicant, but we are requiring our tenants to either lean upon them deciding to close or, and have you that, do they surrender licenses back to town, or we have the ability to go in and actually operate the restaurant and operate it. So it's really more of a, a functional requirement, I guess, in terms of how we finance our centers. And so I don't think it actually affects your right to review each individual applicant or your ability to say that's, you know, not the type of restaurant we want or isn't laid out correctly. It's just a matter that it's reserving six licenses for the point, which I think will all be applied for over the next six to 12 months. In fact, all of them are under construction as we speak, so we're a little bit behind the gun in getting what our lenders need. And I think the biggest fear from that standpoint, just a practical one, is, you know, you build the first restaurant, his lease is actually tied to the fact that we build the rest of them. Uh, so, you know, in some regards, you want to all know that everyone is going to be able, not that I envision a run on licenses over the next 12 months, um, but that's part of the reason. So it's for both for our financeability as well as just the fact that six seems like a reasonable number. You know, long-term, we might want a seventh for the hotel, but we would allow that one to be at, you know, we tried to set this bar at what we think is the right amount for size or the size. And I know our attorneys have worked with Keith and-
Tom Hare.
Tom Hare, yeah, Tom. You didn't have this last time.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did.
But you know it's wider.
It's wider, is that it? Very good. Mine's got a little wider too.
The lights are brighter.
Yeah, they, they are, definitely. So I believe they've worked out all the details.
Yeah, we had Sam's request, this is actually, I think the, the discussion may have been going on for years about what's the best way to do liquor licenses that are geographically located. One of the things that we had looked at is some community, well, for starters, under the quota, well, I'll back up from there. There was a bill that almost passed the legislature last year to abolish quotas, came that close. It's being considered again this year, and this whole discussion may be moved. We'll, we'll see how it goes. But there's the possibility that the whole local liquor license quota system will go away and you won't have to run to the state legislature to get the, the liquor licenses. But until that time, that for a community that has, if there's, if the community has already issued all of its liquor licenses, let's say that it happened here and then Sam came to town and needed six licenses, the only thing we could do is what some of our neighboring, some of the communities, you know, 128 Belt have done, Burlington, Dedham, Peabody, among others, you go to the legislature, get additional licenses, and then their special, the special act actually earmarks those licenses for geographic location. The Peabody Special Act is limited to the North Shore Mall, the one in Dedham is what was, I don't know if it's still called Legacy Place or no, I guess it is. And, um, the, uh, one in Burlington includes the Burlington Mall. So there is the notion that you can go to the legislature, get additional licenses, and then have them be earmarked for geographic location. Since our quota gives us 14 all-alcoholic pouring licenses, and we've only issued four, we have 10, so we don't even need to go to the legislature to set aside, to, you know, to, to, to issue 10 licenses. Sam's request was for six. So Tom huddled with ABCC, who would not give Sam advice, but they would give us advice. So we contacted the ABCC, Sam did, and got the ruling that, that a municipality, a Board of Selectmen, could issue essentially a policy document that says you're going to, that you could earmark the, the license, available licenses for particular geographic location if you wanted to. Now, just for devil's advocate, if you did that, if you earmarked the six licenses and we have four left and we decide we need another 10 someday, what do we do? The answer is, if that, if, if, um, the, if the liquor license quota is still in place and not abolished, then, then a community in that circumstance, we need to go to the legislature and get more licenses. We're even, even under this request, we're, if we go from 10 available licenses down to four, if six are set aside for, for the point, so, um, uh, there's still, I think, plenty of cushion, wiggle room, if others wanted to come forward for a liquor license.
And from past experience, if the town wants more licenses, the state legislature usually grants home rule. So it's not, for us, it's just a matter of letting the six restaurants that we have, they would either come in by themselves anyway over the next six months, one at a time. This just allows us to sort of expedite the finances.
Yeah, and the discussion we've had with Sam is that while the Selectmen could adopt a policy that, that says these licenses are to be used for a particular geographic location, i.e. the point, that it would also behoove Sam to have language in his leases that say, you know, you'll, you know, we'll support you getting a liquor license as a tenant, but if you cease to be our tenant, then contractually you're obligated to surrender the liquor license, so that it would be available for the town for that location. So it was, it was, it was a worthwhile effort, taking Sam's request to, how do, how do we set aside six licenses and do exploring that a little bit with ABCC on how would it work? And so what we have, we have the draft form of an agreement, which you could take under consideration. We would, it would, Sam had initially submitted, actually submitted six applications.
At great cost, because there was a stonefish fire.
Yeah, we were originally, the plan originally was, Sam had actually physically delivered six applications, and we were going to have a public hearing on them in, in March, and then upon review of those, that ABCC said, hold, hold on, you can't do them in that form, basically because, as Sam has indicated, that it's, that he doesn't want to be in the liquor license business, but that ABCC would only allow the particular operator of the establishment to be the licensee. And if that wasn't going to be Sam or his LLC, then it couldn't, then the application couldn't be made by Sam, you have to await the, the establishment, the restaurant, whatever to come in. So it's, it was a lot more complicated than it needed to be, I think, but we think we've come up with-
At the end of the day, I think what this does is just says that we're planning, we're notifying you that we're going to do six licenses and we will bring in before you six applicants for those licenses, knowing that they have, that we control the ability to give them a license if you approve them as a licensee. I think that's pretty much what it says. And so it doesn't take any authorities away from the Selectmen. It gives us some comfort knowing that we don't have, if there was a mad rush, and this is more in the world of Wall Street, if there was a mad rush and you were to find 11 restaurants that wanted to open down the street, we'd have a real problem having already built the buildings. And so that's really what it's doing. It's, it's more of a, it's more dotted the i's for the lenders, and then it gives us the ability to make sure that the licensees are held to a higher standard than they might otherwise be able to.
Does this board have other questions?
I'd like to talk to probably to you, Tom, I guess it would be about local authority. So in the past, we've had a couple of hearings on liquor licenses and violations and stuff like that. Would this have any impact if we were to take punitive action or wish to revoke somebody's license? It would not. So it, so this specifically addresses the, the fact that there's a very personal nature to granting a liquor license because you're not, and this is the trouble we ran into with Sam's team, this board wants to look at the operator, the actual person who's going to be running the show, and you want to look at, you know, the final layout of the restaurant so that you make sure that it's safe and it's operating as it's supposed to. So this is, this does nothing to that authority, you'll still have that authority at licensing, your licensing hearings will go the, the same as they always do, and your authority doesn't change if you need to take remedial action or if you need to take punitive action, that's all still available to you. So if we were to revoke-
Yeah.
What then would the process be, because we have reserve licenses? Do we have possession of the license and are limited only to that area to reissue it? Is that how it's going to work? Yeah, so this is, so this is, you're, you're, you're saying that it's, that it's, your good faith understanding that you're going to leave six licenses available for the point. So if you were to revoke one, the idea is that- Couldn't go elsewhere. It couldn't go elsewhere under this document. And typically, we get into license revocation issues for sales to minors, sales to intoxicated persons, I mean, that, that reasons that would, that would cause the board to find that the license holder is unfit to hold the license. And whether that meant that if, that if-
Which puts us in the same camp as the Selectmen, because we have provisions in our leases that allow us-
Yeah, so if you had a prime tenant and you've got, needed to-
The tenant violated their licenses-
Needed to give them the bump's rush.
And we don't have to worry about them taking the license across the street under, you know, some other name.
Yeah. But, but, but from this board's perspective of when you revoke a license, it's, you know, for, you know, someone who's not qual, who's, who hasn't met your standards for holding a license anymore. From Sam's standpoint, that would mean that that tenant no longer could operate a license, and that might mean that Sam has to go out and find a better tenant who's more capable of, in this hypothetical situation, of, of exercising a liquor license. But all the decisions that the Board of Selectmen, as the local licensing authority, would make at, at a hearing, you, you, you don't give up any of that in this. This is a policy document that says you're, you want to set aside at least six licenses for this geographic location. And that's, and that's a quota issue that says that therefore other locations in town right now would have four to choose, four licenses to choose from.
Any other questions in the board? Right now? Is it, is it, do we want to board on this now, then have the update, or do we want to?
You seem to be well into the discussion on it, maybe take it to conclusion. Yes. Keith, you've been using the word a policy, and obviously a policy is just the Board of Selectmen's policy, can be rescinded any time, but we're really looking at it as an MOU, is that not correct?
Mm-hmm. But I would, but, so from the technical standpoint, the ABCC wants, said, you know, that the, kind of the strict way to do this is through legislation, the, the informal way to do this is through a policy. So I see this MOU as the board's policy.
For this particular speech, right?
It's very unusual, we, we've done this, we usually go to the legislature and ask for six licenses, direct select for a location, because most towns do not have 10 available licenses. And so consequently, this is a little bit of an unusual situation in that regard, because you have had 10 available licenses, I think primarily because of water and sewer, so that have been vacant for quite some time.
But if, but if we had a special act, for example, and it read similar to those at once I cited, and it said, for example, eight, you know, six licenses shall be for the point, and you revoke one, well, you've still got six licenses that are for the point, you know, exercise at the point.
So it's clear to where I'm headed with this, I support it. You're bringing value to the town, we have some value that can contribute to increasing that value also. I'm all for, you know, making this work out, it's just when I'm hearing policy, policy is ours, the board's, I should say, better. And the board can rescind its policy at any time, but we're really entering in an MOU with another agency, Sam Park in this case, and I'm okay with that too. It's just I think we should be choosing our words very carefully, and if we need a policy in addition to writing an MOU, which may be superfluous, and I think I understand what you're saying, Tom, is that in essence this substitutes as a policy for this board because we're signing the MOU. The only thing I would ask is that it is not in perpetuity.
It's not in perpetuity. You have the, this board has the authority to get into the MOU and to get out of the MOU. I mean, I think there should be a good faith reason to get out of it, because you're entering into it for good faith. But yeah, this is not, you're not locked.
May I just ask you, point as to where in the MOU our good faith effort at that point can be exercised?
So it doesn't strictly address rescission, we could add a rescission, but I don't think you need to. An MOU is a memorandum of understanding, it doesn't rise to the level of a contract, and you can't contract away your-
Authority.
Authority under, under chapter 138.
So it's your advice that should we feel was necessary, we could reengage with Sam, have discussions, and do something about that?
Mm-hmm. Can, if it's a, if it's a bad tenant, I think we'd be coming to you saying, why don't you rescind their license? Because that would trigger our default of their license.
But mostly what this is about is giving Sam a signal to Sam and his tenants that when they're ready to submit the applications to us over the next-
Current, I do want to support that, I really do.
-year, that there will be a license there for them to go. And then when you issue that license, then it, that license carries with it all the statutory provisions that it has. For example, you're required to renew licenses without, basically without question, every, every year, and you have to go through, you know, they have the applicant, the license holder has a property interest in their license, so you have to go through all of this procedure.
This is value, and it's value to the town of Littleton, and thus the residents of Littleton has an interest in this. And in essence, we're transferring that to you, which I think is a good deal. Just want to make sure we all understand precisely what we're doing.
The authority of the licenses is taken completely with this board.
Aye, thank you.
It keeps me out of the insurance of being sued as a restaurant owner by six.
You don't want to have to come in here and sales to intoxicated persons.
I don't want to be, right, I don't want to be the one you're revoking a license from.
Any other questions from this board? And Fred, do you still have a question?
Yeah, it's similar to, I think similar to Paul's, and I'm absolutely hoping this doesn't happen, but assume the Board of Selectmen allocates six licenses to the point, and the, in good faith, Sam tries to put six restaurants in over the next two years, three years. If three or four years from now, he's only been able to put two in there, for whatever reason, we've tied up four licenses that potentially could have been used somewhere else, is there the ability to, you know, if-
If, sure.
Whatever happens, you know, he, he gets two really good restaurants in there, he gets the hotel in there, and he's used three res, three licenses, and there are three out there. Is there, is the free, three free licenses available to be rescinded if in fact he's not using them, or, you know, is it?
That was the first question I, I had to ask Keith, and Keith had talked to Tom about it, you couldn't answer that. It's, it's part of the memorandum, that, that could actually be done, but-
Well, yeah, so in response to the question, again, you're entering into this in good faith. So if you want to, if you want to rescind it or amend it, it, there should be a good faith reason to do it. And so under that scenario, I'm assuming that there's, Sam hasn't been able to use three of the licenses, and all the other licenses in town are used, and you have a-
You have a demand, right.
A clamoring for those three licenses. So yes, you could, you could go in and renegotiate and amend, and it's basically your policy as we talked about, so it's, it's, yes, you can do that. It might be, it might be a good idea to try to go to the legislature first and get a few more licenses, but I'm not concerned about putting this board in the position that your hands will be tied if you need to, to change these terms. But I'm not concerned about putting this board in the position that your hands will be tied if you need to, to change these terms.
Any other questions?
Good deal.
Can I follow up on this a little bit?
Sure.
You know, I look at the whole policy versus MOU. You know, I look at, well, okay, so let's say somebody decides they want to do some economic development on the common. And, and we're presented with a similar set of circumstances where they, they're going to need multiple licenses. The reason I'm going there is if it's our policy that will entertain this generally, that's one thing. And the memorandum of understanding is not the policy. The memorandum of understanding is a specific entity, a specific individual. So I, my personal feeling is that the policy and memorandum of understanding are not one and the same, unless we intend to have a policy that's specific to Sam Park's development and not for consideration by anybody else who might try something similar in a different part of town.
So if you want to adopt a policy document separate from the MOU?
I would.
You're welcome to do that, I'm happy to draft it for you. I do think, in my opinion, that the MOU serves as your policy document, but if you want a separate policy document...
But it's a policy for that geographic location?
And as to Alex's point, let's just say generally for Tom Littleton, development is coming in with more than one organization, agency, whatever, that would require a liquor license. Are we willing to reserve them in the buildup process? Is that, are you headed that?
Somebody else has the same opportunities.
If we have some other major commercial development with an onsite wastewater treatment facility to be able to handle at least one restaurant, then we'll, you know, and we don't have any licenses available, then we could follow the same procedure.
That won't be an issue.
You raised good pragmatic arguments there.
Yeah.
I, I think in general that the board would have a policy, nothing wrong.
I mean, it goes hand in hand with promoting a major economic, a major commercial development.
That's what we're about.
Ready for a motion then, Mr. Chair?
All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote A to receive...
You want A or B?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can authorize...
I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you. Yeah, move the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize execution of the memorandum of understanding with Littleton Commercial Investments LLC and the Point LC1 LLC, care of Sam Park and Company, 3 Center Plaza Suite 410, Boston, Mass. 02108, as owners of the development known as The Point, located on Constitution Avenue in Littleton, Mass. With respect to the revision, reservation of, in issuance, at least three liquor licenses to qualified licensees operating commercial establishments at The Point.
So that's six.
You meant? What did I say?
He said three.
Six. I just, I just saw my life, so I'm sorry about me.
You were just trying to see if Sam was listening.
Oh, yeah, you know.
I thought that was the negotiation.
Yeah. Cutting the beat again.
Second.
Okay, so move to the second, we have further discussion. Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So let me give a quick overview, I know there's...
Well, if you will, those licenses are going now.
The Board of Selectmen, so I will just give a quick overview of where we are. And I brought some photographs, and I'm really here to answer any questions anyone might have. It's, the only thing I can tell you is next year I shoot the groundhog. Because it was, this has been probably the longest, hardest winter we've ever faced in New England, building these projects. But basically, maybe if I stand over here so I can see what the audience, I always run into this problem. Essentially, I'll back up a little bit just to bring everyone up to speed if the, if the time permits. It's basically designed as three steps going up the hill. There's roughly a 60, 80 foot grade change from the lowest point to the highest point. And the way we've accommodated that, basically, we have what is called Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. And as they step up, it allows us to create these buildings that have access on both levels as we step up. And so for nomenclature, you have basically in the first area, which is Phase 1, has been, is built, you will see it. And I brought two series of pictures just to show you how cumbersome the, I only brought three sets of this. This was taken four weeks ago, and you can see that what we really, it was challenging because destruction kind of came through a grinding halt due to the snow. And this was taken literally yesterday, where most of the buildings at this point are, I'm sorry. And this is, Steve's car, now I'll get you a set on sort of here.
It's okay.
This is today, so most of the buildings that are being built in this area here are nearing completion, and we're getting ready to start doing the tenant improvements, hence the liquor licenses and the restaurant spaces.
Three of them are six.
Actually, we've had a great, our whole strategy on leasing is possible has been to identify a few of the anchors, which in this case happens to be the main anchor of Building A and the theater that will be coming up on the hill on the third level.
Do your phases go along with the levels of the...
So yeah, that's what we're talking about, is really Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase... They're basically stepping up as we go, and it allows us to do as old as each level as we move up the hill. So this first level is basically, at this point, fully leased. And it is pretty much completed. Katongo is doing most of our landscaping and is trucking it out. So he's a, I think he's, he's made a lot, because he also does our snow removal this year. So he's, you know, delaying getting to the landscaping. But, and that said, we have some final cleanup treatments. We're going to start installing the stone walls along Constitution Avenue, the signage and what have you. We're wrapping up the plaza, Starbucks opened Friday. In fact, there's Starbucks pastries under $50 if anyone wants one in the audience, help yourself, they're back there.
Tea after the summer.
Yeah, exactly, I did bring the coffee, but... But basically, those, those buildings that you see near are nearing completion. We expect them to be basically finished in the next three weeks. The exterior is four weeks, then they'll be working on the insides, develop the restaurant spaces. And what we have opening, basically, Digital Credit Union will be moving here at the end cap. We have an Italian pizza concept, although we're still wrestling with them on economics. But it's a coal-fired pizza concept, so informative pizzas. We have then from here Starbucks, I think there's a haircuttery, a California yogurt company called Menchies, AT&T, Verizon, and AT&T Vitamin Shops, then an Indian restaurant, which is called Bollywood. They're in Andover, and I believe they have one in Burlington. He claims to be well-known by all the technology companies. I don't know why you make that claim, but in our due diligence, he says he is the best of Indian cuisine. He is a local guy, which should kind of go sort of, we had not gone with a lot of, of what I call standard Applebee-type restaurants. We tried to use sort of more unique stuff to keep a little bit different character at the center. So then you'd have here that, as that, then the, one that we did take was, we'll have Mo's Southwest voting in at the corner here, really for the lunch crowd, the Paper Store, and then an Asian kibachi house, which also serves sushi, it's, it's called Tulips. And they'll be opening hopefully by June 30th, is what they're scheduled, will be the living space over. So we're actually looking to announce sort of a more formal ceremonial opening right around July 4th, which is about a year later than we originally planned. But for whatever reason, it should be a fun event. And then as you go up to the second level, we will have something, Vine Brook Tavern, Marcus Palmer, he's a rotten chef, lives in Groton. He will be doing a steak and fish place, it's a white linen restaurant on Level 2. We will also have, I think there's a couple small shops in this building, Pet Source, which will be more of a high-end gourmet pet food and supply place. They don't sell pets, they really are just catering to peddlers, I guess, for, you know, all of their pertinences. And then, so that will, that should all be wrapped up, I believe, at least.
So you can buy for yourself the sweater that you just bought for your dog?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, I think that's probably, it's a little bit a higher-end shop than... We try to stay away from, you know, the, the Petco's and Pet Smarts, frankly. So this is about a third the size of a typical Petco. Then up here, we have, we're still negotiating with the three tenants that would, one would be, we're wrestling between three different sport supply companies, two of them being more mountain-based and a few other companies, right, and one being more of a, of a sports authority type store. The other one being more of a party place, a party supplies place, more for something that would kind of cater, that'd work off of market basket. And then we would have several fashion stores in the middle of those two. And so then, as you get up to this level, then we have Tavern on the Square. So Level 2 would be rounded off by Tavern on the Square, which is a, you might have seen it in South Beach if you've been into Boston, it's sort of gourmet burgers. They do some acoustical music during the weekends and what have you. And what's really neat about this is these, to be honest, those are the major components that kind of create the walkability. You'll notice that we'll have fire pits basically connecting, kind of almost like a fire walk along the roadway, between the buildings. So as you come in here, there'll be a fire pit right in front of Mo's and Bollywood, or just more for ambiance. You walk through the landscape area, which can really, it's probably a million dollars invested in, so that walkway itself, so to create that feel, along with arbers and another fire walk over here. Then it sort of connects on over to Tavern, which will have a sort of plaza, an open space area in front of it, and then it'll just sort of roll on into the Phase 3 area here. These last shops in Building C next to Tavern on that level, we've intentionally left empty. We have just started to market those. Those tenants, we're looking for specialty retailers, and then customer, they'd like to see the building up, you know, that all the restaurants are in. And so as soon as that happens, we'll start leasing those up. So we'll, we're probably, the time we complete it, the time it's fully leased is probably six months, which is a general rule.
Phase 1, Phase 2.
Yeah, yeah, when you finish a building?
Yeah.
And you put the, turn the lights on, you know, so the rest of the building out, but right now houses Starbucks and Vine, the shops that are only two open. Within the next four or five months, the entire, all the space should be fully leased and actually open to business. Building D should be open and completed by, we'll be delivering to tenants by roughly May 15, May 31st at the latest, and they'll take around 90 days, 60 to 90 days to build their space out. And then they would be opening, and that's pretty much, then we just sort of keep jumping forward. So the level that it is, this is essentially near completed. We'll be doing the actual trees and landscaping and the rest of the plaza treatments for the next 90 days. This part here is still what we call a binder, we're still doing some work. This building here will start in the next, we'll be pulling building permits for this building in the next 30 days. And the foundation should start sometime in May. Again, probably about 90 days due to the weather, we're hoping to start. And then this will get wrapped up sometime in the fall. But the idea of this rest is, and we're open for holidays. And then this part here is a longer term, because it takes a little longer to build, there's still a lot of earthwork to happen, but we started, we just mobilized to build the pad for the theater. It'll be a 10-screen, their version of 10-screens is different than most 10-screens. They actually have the same seat count as a six-screen theater, but they are all luxury cozy seats, for lack of a better... They're, they're trying to make this a signature location, it's the meal theater company. It will not be your, you know, packed min type theater, it's actually a lux level, but not just one lux level. All 10 screens are being, they really, they're, as opposed to some theaters having 250 seats. These are generally smaller in terms of seat count. Basically having about the same seat count as a customary six-theater screen, but it's, it's much more expansive because of the amenities that they provide. So that should be opening. I think it takes them unfortunately 12 to 15 months, so they are looking, we don't need three months to finish the earthwork for the pad. They should be starting their construction by July, and they would like to be open next summer. So this is actually moving a little faster than we thought, this is a little slower than we thought. And then this part here is the last phase, which would include the last bit of what we hope would be really our sort of fashion retail or a lifestyle component. So as you go from sort of general merchandise and restaurants up to the higher-end retail shops, as you go closer to the theater. We are exploring some ideas up here that will be a little atypical to retail centers. We're trying to bring in some activities, climbing walls, Metro Rock from Chelsea, those kinds of tenants that would actually, you know, do something more. I think the day we're up, just go to shop, has been the place that's quite candid by your iPad. So now people are really going there for restaurants, entertainment, activities. You know, some of the areas that are being programmed right now would include gaming table, you know, like, not, chess tables, just to be clear, knowing that was an issue.
You can't get those last...
But things like, I know we, we are purchasing equipment for, like, some bachi areas in the sidewalks. So where there are sitting spaces, there'll be bachi tables or bachi, I don't know how to play it, but it's, you know, bachi. There'll be some tables for people to sit, giant chess pieces, those kinds of things mixed in. So hopefully, it's, it's trying to, you know, we did a pretty extensive study of the demos and the demographics here, so we're trying to build a center that is somewhat unique and yet not too high scale that it's sort of out of place. So we're, we're trying to get them that actually fits the, what people we've heard from here want. So it's, you know, for example, right now, we haven't heard a lot of demand for, you know, the verbal Victoria's Secrets or the Good Island Chocolate, but we have heard demand for the little bakeries or the, you know, Cupcake Fairy and shops that have just such sort of different nuance. So since we're long-term holders, I think we're willing to sort of dabble on sort of new venture retailers, at least for about a third of our space, and the other two-thirds will be more national-type regional players. So that's pretty much it, and I guess it's, well, let's see, oh, just to give you a quick overview, I should have probably started with this thing backing up, but this is the, was taken in the fall. So it's, shows the extent of the project viewed from the helicopter. Then these are basically the three levels that we'll show you. So the first level is going to look something like this. So this is what, if you drive up there now and see where Starbucks is open, Vitamin Shops is open, Bollywood, Mo's, Paper Store, and Tulips, that's what's facing that first cutout. And you can kind of see the peek-through, which is the stairway that leads up, and that would lead up to this next level. We're just looking back at it as if you're on the second level looking back. You'll see the plaza, the fire pits, three stores. I think this is where Marcus Palmer will be putting his Vine Brook Tavern. And then we haven't landed this tenant yet, but then you have, I think, Pet Source and another haircutery place over here. And then if you go up to, with the other side of it, you get into the next building, which is Building C, which is more shops, something, we don't know what it is yet on this end, but it's designed to be a two-story retailer right at the corner of the roadway. And then the third level, this probably doesn't do justice to it, but this was the theater's concept of putting the end cap where the cinema is. And you can see it's kind of designed differently than a lot of cinemas. Trying to try to fit in and not necessarily just be a standalone building. So that's pretty much what we have, and if anyone has any questions on progress or specifics, that's really why I came here to answer a question.
And one of the lots was sold to the hotel?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And released at the planning board, released last Thursday.
Thank you. I know there was a lot of interest in landing a hotel, so we have entered an agreement, and we should actually be starting construction within the next two to three weeks. I think all the hay bales, the yellow metal showed up today. We'll be building a Marriott Courtyard at the front parcel. It'll be about a hundred-room hotel, and it's basically right up front.
Is that where your trailer's at?
Yes, exactly. So we've actually finished most of the work over the past summer, getting ready for their start of construction. They actually have come up with a little more green plan than the prior, that we had had under an agreement with a competing brand, Hilton. That company had gotten acquired, unfortunately, last start of construction season. So La France Hospitality will be building the courtyard Marriott. And it basically is a little smaller than the, massing-wise, because the courtyard sized rooms are a little smaller. So as opposed to it being, if you've seen the other plans, which was a C-shaped building, it's an L shape. But it's tucked down here, and it basically, I think, creates a nice little front door gateway, very visible for them. And I think we like what we see, it's got an under... It's got an under, under building, sort of drop-off area.
Sam.
Yes?
I know you already mentioned, but it flew right by me, right across from the hotel, the first building that's going to go in right there, what did you say is going to go?
DCU, Digital Credit Union, and then a.
The pizza?
Kind of hit pizza place.
Okay.
And we'll wait for the, you know, the one that we have under agreement right now, unfortunately, can't build until 2016, so we're continuing to market the space, but it's a, just from their own financial business plan. So we're still marketing this space, but it's pretty much, I think, ideally suited for that type of coal-fired pizza. Great.
So just one question on the courtyard.
Yeah.
The restaurants are going to be, because most courtyards seem to be continental breakfast, maybe.
They have, all the extended stay brands, Hilton, Marriott, they all basically now provide sort of free continental muffins, juice, coffee in the morning, but they generally don't include restaurants. And in fact, one of the draws for this hotel is the fact that they have six restaurants, you know, across the street that they can go to when they have guests. So.
Sam, I just have a random question for you. Just thinking about, first of all, this is amazing, this sounds unbelievable, I'm so excited. Just thinking about kind of safety and people getting there and back after maybe having consumed some alcoholic beverages, right? Have you thought about like taxis, or like how people might be able to easily get in and out without, you know, breaking any laws?
That's a good question. I know his office is right across the street, so if you're not driving.
That's true.
Designated driver, if you run to that, you run.
You'd have to be, not that.
I could certainly go buy taxi rides. Maybe not get to the home.
That's a good question. Relative to the, I think most of the restaurants that we've talked, like, the mostly family-oriented restaurants, and I don't know how, that's why I want to stay out of the liquor business personally.
Yeah.
But it's, I actually don't have an answer for that.
I'm just curious if you guys were kind of going down that path or anything?
We have explored the high school shuttles, not so much for high school kids, but going down to Groton and Concord. As things run, the difficulty with it is, we don't know yet if there's enough demand outside of our one project. So the idea of having some shuttle buses, or depending on what the final use is, there is some potential use for office up here as well, medical office, we've been approached by a couple of the healthcare providers that are.
So the sports complex thing is out, the window?
The, no, well, let me tell you, it's funny, we have two buildings and an upper floor of this building that haven't been designated yet for use, so we're exploring a lot of things. There has been some interest in doing, you know, things like Metro Rock, which is climbing walls, ice rinks, and what have you. So we're trying to explore that. There are big space requirements, and we're very much constrained by a lot of the little intricacies of the wetlands.
Okay.
Which is kind of a, you know, not a knock on the weather, I, first of all, I would like to do a record, I think the Concom has been very good, given how difficult this site has been to manage. I've said that at the planning board, and, you know, I think everyone always gets in battles with the proverbial Concoms, but I will tell you that this Concom just recognizes how difficult it is to move half a million yards of, you know, earth in a short time. And it hasn't been without pain, but it's been a very productive process with them. So, you know, we are looking for ways to integrate other uses besides, whether it is the rock climbing walls, you know, that, a typical rank is about the size of Building K, so finding that much square footage is a little bit tricky, but we are kind of exploring that as well. So these two last buildings here would be the last things to actually be implemented, I think. So that's it.
Great.
Good?
Fantastic.
If anyone ever has any questions, I'm pretty accessible, so just follow.
Sam, before we leave, I have, these are bands that we're hanging up, we think, if you had a donation to the 300th anniversary.
Oh, that's great. And I would like to get together and figure out how we do more celebratory, you know, it's kind of hard to do a grand opening when you only have.
When you're not.
Might have been shops open. But we will be looking to do something around July 4th or early June, right after school. And I think at that point, barring all else, we would want everyone to come by and maybe hire, you know, Indian Hill or High School Band to play and have a little fun of it.
Nice, that's great. And in the meantime, we're, I know that Starbucks is trying, is arranging some sort of their grand opening, maybe in the next few weeks.
Oh, that's right, the 24th, I think it is.
I thought I heard May 1st now.
Oh, May 1st.
But I haven't.
Are you familiar with Starbucks, Keith?
Well, I didn't.
Coffee that you might.
I didn't get there on Sunday.
Well.
So I missed it, I, but I've been there twice today, three, since it opened.
Unfortunately, the snow didn't melt till two weeks ago, so it's been a little behind. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Great day.
What time is it, Sam?
Thanks. Just to check his warranty grant.
Awesome.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Safe drive back to your main client, right?
You've got new vehicle yet, Tom?
No, not yet.
It is harder for us to get to where you are in, what was that, Wellesley?
Wellesley.
Belmont was, let's go.
Six A, Policy Adoption, Workforce Development, and the Personnel Board.
This was introduced at the first, at your last meeting, and it's for adoption tonight.
Ready for a motion? Yes. Move that the Board of Select would vote to adopt the proposed Workforce Development Policy recommended by the Personnel Board on February 5th, 2015, and introduced at the March 23rd, 2015 meeting of the Board of Select. Second, move in second, and all in favor? Aye. Or opposed? Six B, Policy Introduction, Financial Management Policy Amendments from the working group in FinCon.
So very long list of things to go through. I know two of our members, Jim and Paul, are on the work, on the Financial Policies Working Group that adopted this. The changes were unanimously recommended by the working group. The Finance Committee voted to approve them at their, at their last meeting. There's a briefing that Steve Menudi had prepared, and the cover letter covers quite a bit of the subject matter of changes, including, I'm just putting it up on the screen, to the new sections on goals, maintenance of the town's credit rating, tax levy, split tax rate, abatements, tax relief programs, TIFs and pilot agreements, revolving funds, Community Preservation Act funds, revenues, town meeting appropriation, employee costs, budget calendar. The one caveat I'd say is that while there were a significant number of changes in the document, everything was not completed this year, that there are some, some subject matter that the committee will continue to work on, but it was really a huge amount of progress that was made in updating our comprehensive policy document to include everything that we're doing. And so you would, under your two-step process, you'd be voting to accept, you'd be voting to receive them tonight, and then you'll adopt them at your next meeting.
Any questions from the board on this?
The previous policies that were already in extent provided a very good baseline. So as Keith said, certainly, the working group, I forget how many meetings we had all together now, quite a few, was that? To go through it, and some was just plain easy tweaking, a few others, but there was no substantial cost corrections on any of this, that the working group felt that the previous policy was wrong or needed to be completely revamped. Steve Menudi's memo is exhaustive in addressing each of the changes at an overview level, but he certainly, his memo was excellent as a prima, as to what actually went on in that working group, and what the working group finally offered to send forwards about the FinCon and to the Board of Selectmen. Keith was in a lot of meetings, Fred, myself, if you all had any questions, Jim, at least try to answer the questions for you.
Great. Thank you.
Was the view of the committee to keep, well, I'm speaking of the split tax rate, to keep that there? I know there's a lot of talking, careful how we use it, so you don't get to the 150 factor, but seeing how other towns don't even have a split tax rate, I just wanted to, what the committee talked about.
There was no move to eliminate it, to control it, as you just suggested, very much the intent, and year over year, perhaps, continue to readdress it and see if there's a necessity to close the gap, how to, really, how to address the gap each year. And this gives some guidance to work with the assessors, the assessors to come forward. And it added a briefing that previously we did not have, that we'd get the working group of sorts with the assessor, so that we know what they're looking at and why they're looking at it. Because we may recall, when we actually had the assessors in front of us, it was recommended to us that it is this board's decision, and they were just going to offer information. So rather than just getting information at the time we're going to be voting, is to actually have a working group previous to that, so that we'd have much more intimate understanding as to the direction the town was headed with assessed values and the like.
Thank you. There's no questions, we just need a vote to accept it.
Receive it. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive proposed amendments to the Financial Management Policy as recommended by the Financial Policies Working Group on March 23rd, 2015, and adopted by the Finance Committee on March 24th, 2015, and to schedule the adoption of said policy for the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting on April 27th, 2015.
Second.
Move in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Six C, Central Little Sex Emergency Rescue Authority, the ALS.
We are a part of a multiple town consortium to procure advanced life support services. The, the executive committee of that group has recommended that each of the towns adopt a 10% rate increase for, for our ambulance, for our ALS and BLS fees. Those rates have been approved already by the Boards of Selectmen in Acton, Carlisle, Concord, Lincoln, Maider, Weston, there may have been others, this was the list as of last week. The, in, in Littleton's case, it will bring in about $35,000 in additional funds. We haven't, we have not amended the rates since.
2011.
Yeah, yeah, since 2011. And frankly, there was some discussion at the executive committee level that rather than have a 10% increase, you know, all at once, that we, in the future, will be looking at maybe smaller increases over a more regular period of time. But at least for this year, though, to, to catch up, and we had not had a rate increase in the past, that the recommendation was for 10%.
How many vehicles do they run? Do they run two at a time?
I think for this district, they run two at a time. If there's a significant incident, they pull somebody in from Cambridge so that they could have a third in the district.
And how other, just my own information, I see them go by all the time. Do they still say Emerson on the side?
They do, yeah.
And I guess my question is, why would they say Emerson when Emerson's not financing any part of it?
I think initially, the perception of it, it was the hospital-based system, and they simply took over that system. And when they first started, they were still running out of the hospital for a short time, but I believe it was the contract, there was an agreement with the hospital, that if they were going to continue to do it in this area, they would use it under their name.
Medical control falls under Emerson.
Okay.
The doctor.
Right. I just remember going through this subject before, and Emerson wasn't going to fund it anymore, then I was, you keep on seeing the side of the trucks, and saying, why is the name there?
Yeah.
One question for the chief, if I may. Chief, I have in here, the total costs have increased modestly, but the cost per transport has gone because of the lower number of transports. You know what's contributing to that? The healthier people.
Well, one of the, one of the major factors is the motor vehicle crashes. The motor vehicle crashes nowadays, cars can be totally destroyed, but with technology, with the airbag systems, restraints, everything to that nature, you can, we've rolled, it's very common for us to roll up on a car that's totally destroyed and have somebody just stand in there. I'm fine, don't even have a scratch on them, amazing. And I bet you nine out of 10 crashes now, we have signed refusals, nobody, they don't want to go to the hospital, whereas it used to be a regular, you know, a regular transport for us.
Thank you.
Yeah. What's the Medicare reimbursement rate now, has that changed in relation to what you're proposing for rate changes?
Right now, Pro is doing, the billing for them is Medicare plus 400. We are also meeting with Coastal, which is our older bill, the billing company we used to have, we're meeting with them tomorrow, and just to investigate and see what the options are.
David Carlet?
As a matter of fact, yes.
I always said hello. I don't see her shows.
So Coastal, they do bill at a slightly higher rate, but we're trying to investigate, you know, all of our options right now.
What kind of shows are you doing?
Um, thank you.
Highly technical stuff you wouldn't notice there.
Okay. So, so what's the out-of-pocket payment cost? That, I'd have to get back to you. Again, it depends on, you know, your Medicare and the majority of your insurances. I know, depending on the area, as far as your, what were we goofed at, sorry, without having all the, the slums in front of me.
You know where I'm going with this, is, is, you know, the citizens, are they going to be shouldering higher rates for an ambulance transport, and will that result in a negative impact on people holding back? Shouldn't hold back, and so that's, that's my concern here. The other thing that I've always been concerned with is the relationship between Littleton and Pro, ambulance, and primarily, how big a cut each one gets. So in a typical bill, what is the cut now?
That's what we're trying to figure out. We, right, right now, one of the, it's been five years since the inception of this, and the revenue has been, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been relatively the same.
It's been, it's been pretty stable at $320,000 range.
To us.
Us.
And what does Pro get?
I mean, to.
To us.
The way that it breaks down is, we get all of the BLS costs and, or charges.
Correct.
And Pro gets all the ALS charges. So our BLS share, we're basically, that's the one that we.
But on top of that, they also, they get a percentage of the BLS until they hit their, you know, their plateau, at the end of the season, at the end of the, as the end of the fiscal year nears, they may hit that at certain times, and we will get a little bit more for that short time, because they've, they've hit their mark, you know, they, they want a, they have a certain number for each town, for the, it, it, yes.
So, so now we get to where I'm going there. You've been talking about doing ALS service.
Yes.
Whatever Pro makes would be a potential revenue for Littleton.
That is correct. We, like I said, we are meeting with Coastal, and we have been meeting.
How soon can you do it?
We have been meeting with the surrounding towns.
Yeah.
I want to be able to come to you with all of the numbers to say, you know, so that we can show, you know, so that we can offer an improved service to the community and be able to fund it.
Right, we're, we're getting ALS services now through this consortium. We will want to look to explore whether doing it ourselves is a better financial deal. So that's where we're going to look at it.
Now, that's why I was saying, you know, that Pro's, Pro has a very good arrangement here, and they are Pros.
Yep.
And in, in, in all honesty, we don't do that well in this arrangement.
We have been meeting with.
The way to turn that, of course, is for Littleton to provide services that Pro does, and then that revenue stream becomes Littleton's revenue stream, not Pro's.
That's correct. We have met with the surrounding communities that have changed to that service, and they have had very positive results. So as soon as I have all of the, the numbers and the factual information, you will be receiving a presentation on it.
Any questions from the board?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a 10% rate increase for basic and advanced life support services, BLS and ALS, as recommended by the Central Middlesex Emergency Rescue Authority, CMERA.
Second. Moving second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
What, abstention?
Yep. Did you get that? Okay, six D, Town Meeting Assignments and Recommendations. Didn't you recommend them all, or did we?
There were two that you held back on, one was, both of the bylaws, one was the zoning bylaw that was going to be the subject of a public hearing, which the Planning Board held last Thursday, the other was on the Stretch Energy Code, because you wanted to have us first do the public information form, which was conducted last Tuesday. So those two articles, 17 and 18, are the only ones that you have not adopted recommendations on. Also, the Board of Water Commissioners has withdrawn Article 6 of the Special Town Meeting, which was to have been a $700,000 borrowing article for Cedar Hill Water Tank, they're going to bring it forward at a later date, but not at this town meeting.
How come? Just curious. I grew up on that route.
Well, because they're concerned about how their revenues will be impacted by the loss of a major company, so...
Never thought of that.
So, you ready for our motion?
Yeah, the motion for those two articles?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to support the following articles for the May 4th Annual Town Meeting, warrants and directed, uh, the, which articles would be Article 17, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Nonconforming Structures, and Annual Town Meeting, Article 18, Town Bylaw Amendment, Stretch Energy Code, and directed the, the preparation of the motions to be moved and seconded by said board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And now you get to...
The assignments?
Assign them, you get to pick.
It's a long list.
All right. Starting with the Special Town Meeting, we have Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8.
And Melissa and Jim go out even?
Actually, I'll take the first three. Actually, first four, I don't mind doing those.
We haven't given it to you yet, so...
All right. Why, you want them?
So, you're going to take the first?
I don't have that sheet.
Um, we need, Alex, he has a sheet, he's missing page one.
He missed the first one?
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Do we have a paper copy someplace, because it's heavy, anyway?
Here, here's mine. Thank you.
You're taking the first four?
Yep. So Articles 1 through 4, and the special is...
Yeah, me, and I'll take the roadways too, what the heck. And I'm done for the special.
Article 5, do we need anyone for that pick, since it's water?
Um, you probably don't. Six is withdrawn.
Article 8 is open.
I'll do eight.
Okay, Article...
I'll have Jen tell me who's got what, because I lost count. We'll check in the morning.
And then just fill in.
Who was assigned?
Regular Town Meeting, I'll take Article 1, Article 2. You want for 3 and 4?
Sure, I don't mind, don't mind me.
That's you?
You want 3, Melissa?
Sure, yep.
I'll do 4.
I'll take the water one, just as taken system with water.
Took the big one.
Five?
Yeah.
You have 5?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Please.
Six, Parkrick Enterprises.
I'll take that.
Jim has 6, 7, capital from available funds.
I can take 1, 2, or A, B, C, D?
It's all or nothing.
Okay?
It's all or nothing. I'll pick and choose.
Fair enough. I'll take them all.
There you go, it's, I'll take Highway and 8, is that it, 8?
I got, I got the rest of the pages.
Okay, thank you.
Just not the first one.
Is she ready to go?
Who? No, Joe is. I have 8. No. On the schools, do we assign some of those articles, or that would just...
Yeah, you usually do, and then you don't...
Don't speak on them, anyway.
We only speak if no one from the school shows up, as we did one year with, well, what was it, Russell Street School, we carried that all.
This was a borrowing article. Schools have always been that cave.
I'll take the school ones.
We have the schools there.
I think PJ should take the schools. Give PJs, give the schools.
I'll do anything you want.
Do you want to take this?
So you want me to take, uh, room number 4? So you're talking about room number 4?
Yes.
Under 7?
Is that okay?
Sure.
Faculty Needs Assessment Recommendations, PMBC.
Jim, you and me, let's run that, Working Group.
Room number 5, Facility Needs Assessment. I'll take it. A, B, and C. Okay, I'll take the cemetery mobile. I'll take those three, is the three in a row?
Yep.
Room number 6, right?
Yep.
Okay, Town Meeting, Article 8, Community Preservation Budget.
I'll take it, okay.
Who has it?
No, you can have it.
Don't mind me.
I'm winding down, you can have anything you want.
Okay.
I would like the next one, though.
Go on, please.
There you go, perfect.
Alex will go for 10, which is Personal Bylaw Amendment, 11, Stabilization Fund.
What happened to 9?
Yeah, we...
I'll take 9. Since I'm on that...
Okay, Article 10, Personal Bylaw, is it, Alex has it. 11, Stabilization Fund.
All right, I'll do 11 and 12.
I'll do 14.
11 and 12, doing 13 or 14?
14.
14.
Well, why don't we do the 13, 14, School Trust Funds, PJ?
Do what you'd like me to do? I'll do that.
Just ask him, I mean, you're the school type of guy, you know what I'm saying?
I'll do 15.
16.
You doing 15 and 16?
Sure. I gotta do some, I can't do...
Is 16 rescind unused selectmen, is that Jim?
17, Zoning Amendment, Nonconforming Structures, I'll take 17.
I'll take 18 and 19.
18 and 19, go to Melissa. 20, Barring Authorization.
Steve, I'll go, I'll take it with Steve.
They're all consented, didn't do anything.
I'll take 21, 22. Got it?
Should we have Jen read it back?
Man.
We'll just, we'll listen to the tape and we'll circulate it around. Just send it out, wait for the screaming.
Because we probably don't remember what we volunteered for.
Right.
Okay, Other Business, Minutes' Approval.
Comments, questions on the minutes? Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve meeting minutes from Selectmen Meeting, March 23rd, 2015.
Second. Moving second, for the 23rd Minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Which brings us to Executive Session for Collective Bargaining Strategy, which we'll go into and we'll exit.
And there's two motions, you could read both, the motion for 8A and 8B.
We're not coming back into session.
You're not coming back for either one of them.
All right, so move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A, Clause 3, to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with town unions, since, since an open meeting may be detrimental to the effect of the bargaining position of the board, will not convene an open session thereafter. We will also be going into a executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection A, Clause 3, to convene executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation relative to workers' compensation claim, since an open meeting may be detrimental to the effect of the litigating position of the board, and not convene an open session thereafter.
So you have to say yes twice.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Roll call. Melissa?
Aye, aye.
James?
Aye, aye.
All right, Alex, Paul, and Joe, aye, aye.
We're going into executive session, thanks for watching.